Welcome, everyone. We will begin our board meeting, and I am standing to say welcome just because I felt like I couldn't start the meeting sitting. So I'm so glad to see you all here. We are going to just start our board meeting as we usually do. I appreciate your presence tonight. We have a lot to celebrate and honor. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and let's please establish that we have a quorum beginning with a roll called Vote. Joe?
Here.
Corby?
Here.
John?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Christopher?
Here.
I am here as well. We do have a quorum. Corby, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
To help ensure that we're centering our board work around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading our district's equity framework and the whole chunk land acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of your agenda. Corby, would you please be our reader this evening?
Absolutely. In the Verona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity. And the land acknowledgement reads, "There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the whole chunk nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we began our meeting, we honor the land upon which we stand."
Thank you. Board, if you could please look over the remainder of the agenda, and I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So I'm moving.
Thanks, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, John. All those in favor of approving our agenda for this evening signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to staff recognition. The reason I think all these folks are here, right? If we're not really... Okay, just curious. The same shirt thing kind of has me curious.
But first...
Yes? Oh.
It's actually... It's Board Recognition Week, so thanks for turning it back over. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here today, and we want to take just a quick moment to thank... We have a full seven-member board, and we have six with us today, and we are so grateful, not just this week, but every week, for their leadership, for their dedication to all of our staff and our whole community. And so, behalf of the Verona Area School District and all of us that know the dynamic work that you do every day, we want to say congratulations and happy School Board Week. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Now, here we go.
Yay!
It is our honor to not just congratulate, but celebrate the legacy, and as the shirts define us so greatly, the legend of Coach Marks. And, you know, we're just so grateful for the decades of leadership and support, not just athletics, but the development of young people from the Verona Area School District. The...I can't even imagine the number of lives that you've touched in so many positive ways, just through your dedication, your commitment. And it may...it's, you know, the physical activity of cross-country is rigorous in itself, but the way that you approach it and the way that you give attention to detail to every single athlete. And as I read in your bio, the fact that in cross-country, not one single athlete has ever been cut from any of your teams, that just speaks to your character and who you are. So, on behalf of the Verona Area School District, we want to say thank you for 60 years of service. It's an amazing honor to be able to sit in front of you, an amazing honor to get to know you, and thank you on behalf of our district. It's our honor.
I did teach chemistry in the 40s.
Yes, yes.
That was my main reason for coming out, riding my bicycle for the interview in the fall of 1965, in my suit and a place. I wanted a job teaching chemistry, and I got that. And in cross-country, I asked the A.D., "Who coaches that?" He said, "What's that?" We offered him the opportunity to start up the team, said I had to do it for nothing the first year because it wasn't in the budget. So we had seven boys that started out, and now we got a lot more, a lot to be grateful for. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. We're happy to help you. Matt Diller?
Hi. I teach science. I had the pleasure of working with Randy for the last 30 years. In that...in this context, that doesn't seem like that long. I teach science, and then also in my role as the school force coordinator, I've worked with Randy for years to maintain the cross-country course and actually design and build a new one. And so, you know, as a way to kind of mark the time, as a science teacher, I thought it'd be interesting to just go back and look at all the discoveries that have occurred since Randy started. And the problem is, when I started doing that, the first discovery was actually dirt, the heart and soul of Verona Area High School Cross-Country. My coach since 1965, Mr. Marks, is a local legend and much more. He's a pillar of dedication and passion in youth athletics, guiding generations of runners and influencing thousands of lives. In his final season at age 81, it's my honor to recognize Randy's unprecedented career. Mr. Marks founded the boys' cross-country team in 1965 and remarkably has been the only head coach our school has ever known. His love for coaching mirrors his long tenure as a chemistry teacher, where he taught for 42 years before retiring from the classroom. However, his devotion to cross-country never wavered. His athletes were an extension of his teaching philosophy, and whether in the classroom or on the cross-country course, Randy has always strived to nurture growth, resilience, and self-belief. His coaching resume includes leading six Verona Area Boys and Girls Cross-Country teams to state championships, four runner-up finishes, and multiple conference titles and individual champions. Yet, these accolades are secondary to his unwavering commitment to equality and the personal development of each runner. In the 1970s, even before girls' cross-country was an official sport, Randy launched a girls' team with them running alongside the boys. He played an instrumental role in helping to establish girls' cross-country as a sanctioned sport and early advocate for gender equality in athletics. In 1980, the first year of Verona Area fielded a full squad, the girls' team won their first state championship. One of the most unique aspects of his coaching career? Mr. Marks has never cut a single athlete from his team. Regardless of ability, every runner receives his full support and attention. His infectious enthusiasm and belief in each student's potential has never waned, even after six decades of coaching. In addition to his dedication on race day, Randy remains deeply involved in maintaining the very course on which his athletes compete. The whole cross-country course, which he helped design and build, continues to be his labor of love. Even at 81, you can find him out on the course seeding grass, clearing trees, maintaining the trails. He's not just coaching the sport, he's preserving its legacy. Randy Marks is a Wisconsin Cross-Country Coaches Association and Wisconsin Track and Field Coaches Association Hall of Famer. But his greatest legacy is not the titles or the accolades. It's his lifelong commitment to helping students of the Verona Area School District grow, believe in themselves, and overcome the obstacles life throws their way. In the demanding world of cross-country, Randy saw an opportunity to shape the character of Verona's youth, instilling values of perseverance, dedication, and teamwork. Randy's career story stands as a rare testament to the profound impact one individual can have on a community. His life's work transcends athletics. It's a lesson in how dedication, humility, and passion can shape the lives of countless young people. After 60 years of coaching, Randy Marks, you are an inspiration not only to our school district, to Wisconsin, and the entire nation. Thanks a lot.
you with a little symbol of...I say little in comparison to the amazing things we heard. Thank you, Matt, for sharing so many accolades about you, Coach Marks. The plaque reads, "In recognition of 60 years of distinguished service, with appreciation for your dedication to our students, schools, and the community as a cross-country and track coach." On behalf of the district, we share our incredible gratitude to you for your time in the classroom as well as a coach. I'm so glad that that was highlighted, your power as a chemistry teacher as well in this district. We are so excited for you to celebrate with us. Thank you for joining us to share in this space, and I hope the celebrations continue for quite a while. Congratulations, you all. We do have more of a board meeting. My hunch is the celebration idea maybe sounds pretty interesting to all of you. Please feel free to move on to whatever celebrations you'd like to have. Oh, yes. And we do have one more recognition before maybe I send you out. Yeah.
Maybe this is a good time to...
No!
Today, we want to recognize Sugar Creek School, Sugar Creek Community, and the school's outstanding leader, Mr. Todd Bruner. Todd cares deeply about Sugar Creek and wants to ensure that the bright future ahead for all the students and staff that he serves on a daily basis. He's been exploring an endowment and gathering funds to get one started, and this year, he met his goal and formalized the Sugar Creek Elementary School Endowment in September 2024 with his partnership with the Madison Community Foundation. The endowment pulls together a range of undiscussed grants for Sugar Creek as received through the years from parents, grandparents, companies, and other donors to collectively have a significant and long-lasting impact on Sugar Creek. A team representing Sugar Creek family, staff, and student voices will allocate the annual proceeds and activities for projects in support of Sugar Creek forever. Absolutely. We want to thank Mr. Bruner for his foresight, innovation, and thinking, and thinking about leaving a legacy in Sugar Creek. We know the impact that he has on his students and staff on a daily basis, and now he has provided financial resources for the full Sugar Creek community for a lifetime. We want to thank you, Mr. Todd Bruner, for your...
I actually have a Randy Marks story. So Randy's girl granddaughter spoke with Sugar Creek, and every day, Randy, for years, would come to school to pick them up. I never saw two girls with such joy on their faces as when their grandpa came up this night. So Randy, they know you in one capacity in this room, but I only saw you as the grandpa and two little girls plump.
I love these board meetings. My face hurts from smiling, so thank you for bringing this joy into the space and for just bringing all these recognitions. This is really what our board table appreciates too, is being able to honor things happening in our district. Thank you all for coming. Congratulations, Coach Marks. Happy onward celebrations to all of you. Thank you.
Yeah. So this one says dedication. In those 42 questions called in, sorry, that's the first.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
I know. Are we going to kind of turn this a little bit as well? Okay. I know. I know.
I'm ready to go home.
Yeah. So, right, so our next piece is more board workshop, so I think we're going to kind of do our rearrangement. We do have a chance to be a little bit more in discussion mode and seeing one another.
How do you want to turn it?
Yeah. Yeah. Are they locked?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah. Take yours.
I don't know. I see.
Well, there's another one too, if you want to...
I have like 40 seconds.
You're ready?
I don't know. I hope you're...
It's like, you need to bust on the table.
I guess I want to be like...
Because a superhero can fly. What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
It looks like my kindergarten curtain.
Regular polygon.
It's timely and everything. That's why it's so great.
Exactly. Fabulous.
I'm so just gonna buy later now.
I know.
Get me off.
Hard to comprehend.
Never made that sense. I think we're supposed to tell you during...
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Looking at the granddaughters, that was...
Nope. Nope. That's my favorite answer.
All right, so our next agenda item is really more workshop mode, so if I'm summarizing or kind of prepedising correctly, that we've had a lot of ongoing conversations. Anytime we've been analyzing results policies in terms of indicators, the efficacy both in terms of how leadership team feels about them, what we're kind of craving and needing as data as a board. So tonight's discussion is really just that. So, Board, we know that the indicators are owned by leadership in terms of things to present to us to approve, but just trying to get some insights into what your team has been thinking, getting some board inputs, so hopefully we can come to some sort of consensus around moving forward. Yeah, so that's kind of the frame for the night. I set that up in a way to pass it over, leadership team.
In case I was dropping off the box, I was trying to drop off the pipe box, but it just is your framing, if you think that we are not asking for a vote today, and there's no board action on the agenda. Also, as we're preparing to have discussion, I just wanted to kind of put a very recent example of perspective in the space, so those thoughts can be in our mind as we're thinking about how to think about metrics in a way that may be fluid, because one circumstance doesn't always match the next circumstance. As you think about our current implementation of new ELA curriculum, you think sometimes the focus gets too much on the selection of the resource and not the significant transition of the way and way of teaching that our staff go through when a new teaching methodology happens, as well as implementation of new curriculum simultaneously. The...even the most effective curriculum in the world will never be relevant without the practice of teachers, and we always want to keep that in space. So as you're thinking about, you know, how are we measuring success at a time? Is it year one of implementation of teacher strategy look the same as year two? And how do we possibly look at expectations being tiered based off what our staff are doing in terms of delivering? So all things of perspectives, I just wanted to put into the space as we think about just a different way of looking at what the student experience, how a student experience can be measured. So, yeah.
Awesome. Well, thank you. I just wanted to appreciate Adam and Teresa for joining us tonight. I think this is Teresa's first board presentation in her new role as director of elementary, but also our new district assessment coordinator. Adam's here to support as the former district assessment coordinator, who began many of these conversations with us about indicators last spring. So really, our goal this afternoon is, or this evening, I suppose, is just to share what are the current shifts that we're thinking about as a result of many conversations to better streamline our results indicators, to actually measure the things that are most meaningful to us as a board and to our community, and then really open it up for some discussion so that we can get your feedback on are we headed in the right direction? Are we getting a bit closer to streamlining these processes? So, as we begin, some of the shifts that we've made, and it was a good reminder going back to, I think, our first conversation about indicator revision was in March. And in March, the big note of that presentation was maybe we should shift from STAR to FORWARD, right? We were thinking just about individual test metrics. Now, we've taken it after months of conversation and kind of blown out the idea of maybe it's not just about an individual test. Maybe it's about what we actually want for our students, which is to be literate, regardless of what the test itself is. So the first shift that you'll see in the proposed indicators tonight is that we're moving away from one indicator aligned to STAR, one to ACT, one to FORWARD, and instead saying, "What percent of our students, regardless of the test, are proficient in literacy?" Right? That's what we're really trying to get at, right? So you'll notice that shift to provide a more holistic picture of our district. We've also narrowed the number of indicators pretty significantly. We have 11 or 12 indicators for some of our core subjects within results policy two, and tonight, we're proposing one indicator around proficiency, how many students are proficient in that subject area, and one indicator around growth, recognizing that if students aren't yet proficient, we really want to make sure that they continue to grow. Even for students who are proficient, we want to continue to meet our obligation to accelerate their growth beyond.
Just for consideration, we're not proposing.
Sorry. Yes, things that we're considering. Thanks for the language correction. I really appreciate that. The third shift for consideration is being inclusive of literacy rates for both English and Spanish assessments. Previously, we had separated those out, and we want to better honor the work of bilingual C, as well as differentiate between ones that are actually a reading concern, about reading proficiency, versus when is it a language development and language acquisition concern? That will help us dig deeper into how we support those students. And then the final shift is around using enrollment data. So in the past, as we know, when we get to the results policies that are around many of our elective areas, performing arts, physical education, et cetera, those are all based on enrollment data, and as one increases, then the other decreases. And in the end, in our board conversations, in our previous board workshop about graduation requirements, we recognized that in the end, what we care most about is that students see a pathway for themselves through the Verona Area School District that meets their post-secondary goals and gives them opportunities to explore different areas of interest. And so, the consideration tonight is thinking about what might that look like to make those indicators tied to student voice in the form of a survey as opposed to enrollment data. So those are some of the key shifts that you'll hear about tonight and see in these indicators for consideration. So this is linked, and I believe it was a separate handout for you, but when we think about the indicators for results policy two, we think about them in two chunks. 2.1.1 through 2.1.4 are really our core subject areas, language arts, math, the science, and social studies. We created a mock-up here of language arts for you to review, so you could kind of see on the left-hand side, these are the current indicators as they stand, and possible indicators for consideration on the right side. So where, as we currently have different indicators aligned to different assessments, we're thinking about moving more holistically to one indicator about proficiency, regardless of what the assessment is. Of course, making sure that there's a respective assessment for every grade level represented within our system, but recognizing that that's going to be ACT at the high school, like the Ames Web or STAR or FORWARD at elementary, but really one indicator about proficiency. Similarly, we would do the same for growth, and we would take the second chunk of indicators there and look at what does it mean for students to demonstrate growth in these areas. So again, for students who aren't yet proficient, are they moving towards proficiency? Are they demonstrating typical or high growth? As well as for students who have met proficiency, are they continuing to move forward? Can we click on the...
Here.
Oh, there you are. Yes, we'll just click on the document, and it will actually bring up the actual... And that sits in Board Docs as well. Everyone around just the specifics for the workshop, there's a separate link to the actual poll with growth indicator as well. So this is just an example of 2.1.1 language arts, but if this was a direction that seemed to meet our needs, we would do the same thing for math as well as for science and social studies. So all four core subjects, we would propose, or we would share for consideration, excuse me, opportunities to look at a proficiency metric as well as a growth metric for each. And then, for our electives areas, which is the second half of our results policy number two, this is our CTE, our world language, our art, music, and then PE and health. Those are the ones that, as you see on the left, the current indicators are really around enrollment. Many of those enrollment metrics, possible indicators to consider would be two survey questions that we've currently come up with. One would be, "The course offerings at the middle school and high school support my growth towards my post-secondary goals?" And the second would be, "The course offerings at the middle school and high school allow me to explore my areas of interest?" These would be survey questions on a Likert scale from strongly disagree to strongly agree. Students at the middle school and high school all have to submit their course choices and course offerings. So the idea would be, we would add these survey questions when students submit their course requests. So we believe we could have a high degree of participation and a pretty representative sample of students' responses to these survey questions to really get at how is the programming that we have in CTE, world language, art, music, and PE health meeting both their post-secondary goals as well as their areas of interest? Because we talked about graduation requirements at our board workshop earlier this summer, we talked about some students are really interested in depth, they know what they want to do, and they want to follow their course through high school to get there as quickly as possible, right? For other students, they're thinking more about breadth, what are all the different opportunities we have in the amazing course guide we offer here at the high school, and how can I explore many different options? And we recognize that for students, it's just a different choice, not good or bad, not one being better than the other, but recognizing that we wanted to value both. And so, we thought perhaps these questions could get a little closer to understanding how students are experiencing the course offerings that we have here, and providing this street data too back to the schools to then reflect on what do we need to consider in the future around our continued work with course offerings. So with each of these, and we recognize moving from multiple indicators, 11 indicators for language arts, moving down to just two, one for growth and proficiency, would require us to propose, or excuse me, to share a body of evidence, so potential evidence. So instead of us listing out STAR proficiency, Ames Web proficiency, ACT proficiency, like our current indicators do, we would instead be sharing with the board a body of evidence to support that indicator. That body of evidence could include some of the things that you see here on the slides, things like what is the current states, right? How many of our students are currently proficient in literacy, right? We would share our past progress. What did this look like in the past? And how does this compare with other districts across the state of Wisconsin? So really thinking about that. This also provides an opportunity to share leadership roles. As Dr. Clarity says, some of their work is fluid and changing. how students are experiencing the course offerings that we have here and providing this street data too back to the schools to then reflect on what do we need to consider in the future around our continued work with course offerings. So with each of these, and we recognize moving from multiple indicators, 11 indicators for language arts, moving down to just two, one for growth and proficiency, would require us to propose, or excuse me, to share a body of evidence, so potential evidence. So instead of us listing out STAR proficiency, Ames Web proficiency, ACT proficiency, like our current indicators do, we would instead be sharing with the board a body of evidence to support that indicator. That body of evidence could include some of the things that you see here on the slides, things like what is the current states, right? How many of our students are currently proficient in literacy? Right? We would share our past progress. What did this look like in the past? And how does this compare with other districts across the state of Wisconsin? So really thinking about that. This also provides an opportunity to share leadership roles. As Dr. Clarity says, some of their work is fluid and changing. There were times in the past where we've been sharing about indicators and then having to say, well, the indicator language doesn't work anymore because something changed with that assessment, right? Providing a body of evidence allows for the flexibility for us to do that. So for example, this year, we're moving with Act 20 to reading plans. We could provide as part of the body of evidence, the number of students on reading plans and the number of students moving off of reading plans. There's some flexibility for that. We also have the opportunity to be inclusive of the student experience. We've heard how powerful student stories are and that street data is for people understanding what the work is that we're doing, right? What is the impact? We see numbers, but what is the impact of a student experience? All the amazing students that were just gathered in this room were gathered because of the impact of a system and an individual within our system. And so how do we make sure that as we're presenting evidence, we're sharing that student experience? And finally, would certainly include our commitment to have disaggregated data in all our bodies of evidence so that our work to ensure the progress of students in our focus group is also continuing to be uplifted. So these are some potential. If we're going to broader indicators, right, we would want to provide some bodies of evidence to go with that. And these were some data sets that were surfaced in prior conversations that would be helpful in those bodies of evidence. So with that, it kind of brings us to a few questions just for consideration for the board tonight. And of course, as you said, Jen, this is really about the board's discussion and we're here to learn from your feedback along the way. So certainly appreciate your reactions to these ideas and specifically have a few questions here. The first being what parameters or metrics would be useful in developing specific bodies of evidence to ensure balanced and comprehensive representation of the data story, including the experience of students in our focus group. We recognize our obligation to make sure that if we're providing a body of evidence that it's truly representative of the student experience here in Verona Area School District. And we know that that can vary widely. And so looking for what are the parameters or specific metrics that could help us make sure that the board is getting the objective information that you all need to help measure our progress and continue helping us move forward. And then secondly, are we looking to set specific percentages? So do we want to be in a place where we're saying a certain number, a certain percent of all students will be proficient in literacy? Or are we looking to make a more broad statement about how we value literacy and strive for all students to be proficient? And then we provide the board with a body of evidence and the board determines at that point that reasonable progress has been made or not. So those are kind of two big buckets of questions that we'd be interested in your feedback about this evening. So I will pause there and get ready to take notes.
We can start with the last one about the specific percentages. I know we've had like a percentage discussion, but when we're talking about proficiency, this is one where I feel like we can't set a percentage of, like I would feel very uncomfortable saying we're good with 75% of our students being proficient. Like that's not something I could feel. So that's one where if we are going to have any type of percentage, it's kind of all. It's 100% is really the goal that we're aiming for and we may be falling short from that. That's the only percentage that I think is really reasonable to put in that context.
Yeah. That's helpful.
Did you just say that you would put all?
I wouldn't want to set a percentage less than all students being proficient. That should be the goal. I don't think we achieve necessarily 100% proficiency, but to say we're going to be okay with 75% proficiency or 50% proficiency doesn't feel quite right for me. Just kicking off the conversation.
I love it. I feel that. However, like, you know, the national average at like fourth grade is like 38% students are proficient. I'm more comfortable with putting a percentage out there that is not all if it's in the context of like reality, like what else is going on out there? I'd imagine if you looked at similar districts to ours, it would probably be a little bit, but not significantly higher than that 38%, maybe like 41% or something like that. So I just think, you know, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing right now. I'm just throwing that out there as like, I get where you're coming from. I'm just struggling with like, how do we keep it real?
Yeah, I've put a fair bit of thought into this. The way that like I rationalize it is you can set goals for multiple reasons. If you're setting and communicating a goal to communicate your values, then yeah, we want to say every single student will be literate. But if you're setting a goal as a means of measuring someone's performance, then it's not realistic to say, and it doesn't mean whatever percentage we set can't be a moving goalpost, that once we consistently hit the benchmark, we move the benchmark. Or if the benchmark of people around us who we compare ourselves to has moved, we can move the benchmark. But if all we're doing is communicating our values, then I'd say absolute because we're never satisfied until every student is literate. But the purpose of this whole structure is also to review the performance of the superintendent. And if we say every student, which we already say in the policy language itself, if we say that and hold him to that, then he's going to fail that every year.
So I guess with that, because if we're not going to go with the all students, because I'm really uncomfortable putting a percentage less than that, then I wouldn't, I want to veer away from a percentage point and say just growth, a growth and percentage annually or at least.
Yeah, and I could get behind that. So one of my broader thoughts about all this, that as we've gone through a couple of cycles of the assessment process, I've been really uncomfortable, especially around some of these results policies that have so many indicators, is it feels like it's now a checkbox analysis and it takes all the discretion out of my hands. And even if I thought we were making reasonable progress on what the policy said or the result expectation was, if we didn't have all readings, I felt like my hands were tied and I couldn't say yes. So I'm much more in favor of moving to a more subjective assessment of performance where the data is evidence of the performance rather than the data is in and of itself the proof of, is yes or no, proof of success.
What I'm hearing you say is it feels like that as a board, we're a bit more empowered to do our role of taking the data and the evidence and giving our interpretation to say, okay, based on what you've presented, this is as a board, how we sort of view the progress in terms of being reasonable, meeting expectations, whatever that may be. Am I reflecting that back?
Yeah, that's how I feel.
I agree, but I think, first of all, I would say literate and proficient are not the same thing. You can be proficient at every grade and in some cases illiterate. You can be perfectly well illiterate and functional and not proficient at some rate. So I just kind of keep that in the back of our mind when we talk about proficiency. I think, Joe, what you said about, you know, is this for to communicate values or for accountability purposes, you know, to the extent that it's accountability, you know, I kind of feel like there has to be something in there that says, here's the way the world is and here's kind of how we fit in. And that's a part of the body of evidence. I agree with you that like I don't want to have my hands tied, hands tied in terms of interpreting are we successful or not. I think that that should be subjective, given the whole body of evidence. But part of that body of evidence for me has to be like what percentage of our students are reading at grade level. And I feel awful saying this because I used to always be the one that's like, I don't care about the hard data, I want to hear the story, I want to know what's going on. But at a certain point, like we have a fiduciary responsibility to know what percentage of our fourth graders are proficient. And I'm saying that as, you know, someone who's worked in reading education, that was an important number for me because the curriculum switches around that time to where they have to be able to read to keep progressing. And so, you know, it's definitely, I definitely want to focus on the body and I want that to be the focus of our discussion, but I feel like we need to have a way to have some of those key metrics.
One last thought and then I'll show up when other people talk, is I agree with that. I definitely don't want to lose that data because that is only a piece of the story, but it's a really big piece of the story. Then the other thing I don't want to lose, and I don't need it built into an indicator as like a checkbox, yes or no success, but I don't want to lose benchmarking because as someone who's not an industry expert in education, I don't know what number is good or not. I don't know the context of the results other than to compare it to our own results the year before, but that doesn't really give me a full picture of context. So I don't want to lose that part of the data either, but it doesn't have to be built into a yes/no indicator.
Corey, jump somewhere.
Yeah, no, no, I'm fine. One of the things, one of the issues I've always had when we look at our data is when we're tracking progression, when we're looking at that bottom number and the number of total students changes from year to year. If there's some way, and I don't know how we do this, not a data person, if we can track the progression of that group, that same group of students from this year to that year, to that year, to that year, so we get a true depiction of their story, are they really progressive? Because when we throw, when that bottom number changes and we've added more students, by opinion, we just skewed that data. It's not really telling the story from the previous group of students because adding one student just changed the whole story. And I don't know how we do that.
Like to tell the story of the impact our district and our practices are having on a group of students?
Yes.
Because we follow, right, students that have not been in or out. That's interesting. I think kind of to, some of the things that Joe and John were speaking to, also seeing our role as board members, right? Our board is also a representation of the community and trying to reflect what the community may desire to know and understand. So to your point, Joe, not everyone lives and breathes these data points all the time. So how do we even understand comparative data? So I think that's even a really, I think, super key piece is who are we comparing ourselves to and starting to make that more transparent even within our own discussions and with the community? Because we are our own entity and want to do things how we want to do things. And there are just external ways that people look and judge and analyze our district, but I think infusing those to a degree makes us, again, I think, doing our role in a way that, you know, honors our position at this table and reflecting questions the community may need to understand or have.
I think an important note with that, Jen, is just recognizing that if we are going to a model that is collapsing, right, in many of these indicators into one that we're coming up with a percentage or we're defining how many of our students are proficient in all of these respective literacy assessments, we're likely not going to have that exact same data point for other districts because they may have a different suite of assessments. So I can tell you another district has this many students that are calibrating for already based on ACT and this many based on, and we'll all have Ames Web Plus now as a state, a STAR is subjective at different grade levels, et cetera. So just recognizing, we won't be able to say that this is for the, you know, another Dane County school district, that this is exactly their number on that, but we'll be able to provide individual test results in that way. So just want to be upfront about what comparative data we would have access to from other districts and how we calculate our own.
That actually leads to one of the questions I scribbled down here was like, if we do this, we're using all these different tests, right? How do we control for how one assessment versus another might define proficient? Or are we just assuming that because they're all saying proficient relative to the same like common core grade levels that it really just means the same thing and we don't need to control for that?
So when we think about things like the STAR, the STAR benchmark for proficiency is aligned to proficiency on the FORWARD. FORWARD proficiency is aligned to grade level standards in that way. So they're all trying to move in that direction. Really, we should be, our focus is on grade level standards. So the mark of proficiency should come back to grade level standards, but I see what you're saying, John, in terms of how far removed are they from the measurement of that? Is that what you're getting at?
That's what I'm getting at. But I also wonder if we're, if out of all of our curriculum is tied to grade level standards, then one of our data points, and you know, again, this is making a lot of assumptions about people doing, assessing and grading in the same way, then one of our data points is really simply like whether or not our teachers are saying their students are at that standard. Yeah? I mean, because the tests kind of get to be a circuitous way of getting there, I think.
If, John, can I just clarify? Were you trending towards using grading as a?
No. Okay. I'm not. I'm just like, my brain's getting in my own way because the theoretical question is like, you know, the FORWARD exam is one step removed from those standards as interpreted through the test makers. Your STAR exams are then another step removed as relating to the FORWARD exam. So, you know, theoretically, your curriculum being aligned with the standards, whether or not a student gets mastery, exceeds mastery, or near mastery in the middle school level is directly tied to the standards as interpreted by our teachers, which is a whole other messy question. So very, like I'm coming at it from like an overly theoretical way. And so, no, I am not suggesting we jump into the pitfalls of using grading, but thinking out loud.
I think another, perhaps connected to what you're saying, John, is that when you look at social studies, you look at science, those aren't assessed at every grade level on the FORWARD exam. So when we think about providing a body of evidence, both of those are current results policies that are in capacity building because we've been working through curriculum renewal processes and so much of our evidence there and we think about a body of evidence could be, could tie back to some of what you're identifying in terms of teacher, what's the teacher indication of a curricular renewal process and their confidence and their ability to deliver and assess grade level standards in that area? So I think there is some room, if we tease out what are the parameters within that body of evidence, to combine this previous idea of either had quantitative data for each indicator or we said it was in capacity building. If we're moving to a body of evidence, we essentially are pulling both of those together. We could provide evidence of capacity building as part of the body of evidence with the student data as well to show how that's coming together to support overall our progress towards grade level standards.
So in terms of helping just leadership team as a board, how are you all feeling about this kind of idea of consolidation? I mean, just that proposal right in and of itself is quite different of taking this barrage of indicators and trying to kind of synthesize into something more broad? Just any general sentiments? Because we kind of leaped into, I think, layers beyond that, but I'm curious where folks are feeling about just that kind of initial frame.
So I was thinking about this just in terms, I had a lot of, it was an emotional rollercoaster to read the proposed indicators, I'm not going to lie, because I was like, oh, I love how simple it is. Oh, I hate that it's just this one thing. And what does it all mean and how do I do that? And I, you know, come back to what I said last time about like, you know, I need to know like something that tells me, are we effective? Are we effective relative to other people that are in similar situations as us? So we know what we're doing uniquely makes us effective? And how are we doing over time? Like those are the three things. I can actually probably get all three of those things out of that one indicator. So I need you to kind of be like, initially, it was kind of like, oh no, like this is not where I need to go. But then I was kind of like, you know what? I can take that idea of proficiency and as long as we're, you know, getting right, kind of close to that every year, you can kind of create a time series. And you're not going to be perfect at comparing to other districts because everybody uses things, but you could even just, you know, look at similar districts. You can even just take, you know, you just need some sort of anchor point. Like I said, you take the national report card and say, you know, we should be beating that up every year because we have more resources here than a lot of places. And we should be doing a better job with those resources. So it's like, well, we've got the national report card, we've got similar districts resource-wise, and then there's us. And are we doing better than that? Those are the things, like if I were to set out, like this is what I would want as a board member, I would want those boxes checked when we came back to you. This is how we're measuring efficacy to prove to you that we're effective. This is how that relates to other places and this is how we've done. And this is how we've done over time, especially for introducing new curriculum or methods or something like that, or there's some been, been some major shift somehow that we need to track. Like those three things allow me to kind of get a story out of it. I don't know, that's, there are a lot of highs and lows maybe with that. That's why. Ooh!
So do you feel like those three things can come out of an indicator like the one that's suggested here?
I'm saying that like, I, you know, we don't own the indicators, but I wonder if it's worth the board kind of giving guidance on, like, whatever you do with an indicator, I want to, however you present that body of evidence, I want efficacy, context, history. Like, and if you can throw that up there and make me believe it, then you've done a good job. You know, I don't know, I'm already making Joe skeptical though.
No, I'm, I'm not skeptical of any of that. I was, I was moving on to a different thought. I agree with everything you said. What I want out of indicators is the flexibility to be able to interpret the evidence in the way that, and, and in my own mind, compare it against what the policy expectations are. That's what I look for, which comes to me way more from the evidence than comes from what the indicators say. But everything that John just described is what I want in evidence as well.
Can I just quickly put into the conversation, so I just quickly pull it up with the example of a peer group. So if you did peer group, that was enrollment and socioeconomic status as a, as a group, so if you wanted that. Our peer group would be Chippewa Falls, DC Everest, DePere, Howard, Shemago, I said it wrong, apologize. Nina, Oak Creek, Kamauak, Wamatoa, and West Bend. So if you think about that, ten, those 10 schools, what is it that they're doing that you would want to compare?
I think, sitting here at the board table, we have to be cognizant of what our community is going to be looking at and none of those schools are going to matter. It's going to be what is Middleton doing? What is Sun Prairie doing? What is Wanakee doing? And really that's it.
Like, right, even though they're, yeah, yeah. Geographically comparable, not, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, it doesn't really matter what's going on elsewhere other than next door.
I would add, I would caveat that though, like, you can make a case for those peer schools if you can center it on like, resources, like this is what makes us similar. You know, the resources that the district has at its, at its disposal, the demographics of students that it's teaching, so you're controlling for frankly, some of the social factors that are really outside of the school's control. Like, I get that those are our peer districts because, you know, Sun Prairie is a bigger place. You know, Middleton's maybe more affluent place, right? Wanakee is a crazier place, you know, like, never miss a chance.
You realize they're here with us tomorrow, right?
Yeah, I'm getting it out of my system now.
We're gonna be talking this together.
Yeah, we're gonna be talking this together, I guess. So yeah, I, I, I think I agree with Meredith, but at the same time, like, you can stretch that if you're making the case that these are why these are peer districts. It's not just because people chose to live here instead of Middleton.
I think the hard part of that is that we're using this as qualitative data for superintendent, whereas our community is looking at it as just an overall healthy district.
Yeah.
Those are. Yeah, yeah, because I could have moved a few miles that way. And I think honestly that is, there are a little bit of cross purposes how the data is going to be used. But I think we as a group can accomplish our, you know, purpose with this data using neighboring schools, whereas we are not allowing the community to have insight into the data we use. So that would be my, I guess.
I, I, I guess I disagree with them. I think you can split apart the idea of the community trying to get what they want into a different presentation, right? We do it when the state report card comes out or whatever, we can present all the data on what all the arcing we're in schools. But to me, and this goes back to, I need to know as not an industry expert, a benchmark of what's good and what's not good. And the only way to do that is to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. So I want to find the most, the schools in the state that are most like us. And what that means can get into a lot of what John said, like it's how you define what most like us is. But I, I, to me, that's data that will help me do my job better. I agree that that's not what the community wants to hear.
Actually, it's not what I wanted to know. So I don't want that, I mean, I don't want, I want to know what's going on in Dane County.
I want to know that too.
So can I just, 100%? I think if you're framing it in terms, it's all, it's all comes down to how you frame it, right? Like, if you're framing it in terms of like, you know, we're not comparing ourselves to Chippewa Falls or West Bend, we're comparing ourselves to districts with similar proportion of students with free and reduced lunch. We're comparing ourselves to districts with, in this case, we're going to compare ourselves to districts with some more property value base, you know, things like that. You can, you know, get at those apples to apples things, but then on some level, you need to say like, here's how we're doing in Dane County. And I mean, and I think we recognize, we all recognize that because that's how we do salary discussions. Right? We look at where could these teachers otherwise go? And it's the same thing where serving that function of like presenting to the community, they're not going to move to Chippewa Falls, you know, they're not going to move to West Bend. It's not important for evaluating the superintendent, you know, I think. But do we have an obligation to the community to say?
I guess to me it's, you're not comparing yourself to these other schools, you're comparing yourself to the benchmark. And you've created the benchmark by looking at like peer organizations. So I don't really care what Chippewa Falls is doing or Nina's doing or Swamco or whatever, but I care about in the aggregate, what the benchmark standard is for districts like us.
Maybe you took all those districts and averaged them and said, this is the benchmark for the year.
Exactly. And I don't want to lose the comparison to the Dane County schools because that's a really important data point as well. I'm not sure it's a data point that's, that's important to me in the evaluation of the superintendent. But when it, it's important to me and how we communicate to the district or to the, to the community.
And if we don't talk about that geographical information, they're talking about it with each other, right? I mean, people know everyone in all these surrounding communities, so if we kind of pretend that that's not relevant, I think we're also just.
What I hear is the way to do this is to say, here's our benchmark. I don't need to go into how it was created. Here's our benchmark for the year. Here's how we're doing against that benchmark. We're up, or we're down, or whatever. Here's the benchmark, we looked this up for the other districts for them because they aren't going to do it themselves. Here's the benchmark for these other districts in Dane County. Here's how they're doing relative to that benchmark. Decide. The odds be ever in your favor.
Yeah, I just, I want to put into space in our live meeting, we still have a submit, send it in our respect for our Dane County partners.
Yeah, oh yeah. Oh, but, so I still want to win, Eric.
Yes.
I did that.
Some, some questions and, and forgive me for my, my ignorance in the, the, the assessment and the results from them, but I think one of the concerns I had is, you know, that how do we measure our success with traditional marginalization, so, you know, racial backgrounds and economic status? And, and for me, like that's, that's where, you know, if we start looking at other school districts or even within our own district or, or county, like that's, for me, should be the highest amount of effort that we're putting into it. And so I can't assess whether this is going to be better because ultimately I need to know that story because that, that is, that needs to be one of the major priorities for us if we're going to live the value that we've stated, our equity value. So it's, it's really difficult. I like things that are easier with data, but then at the same time, is there, how do we parcel up that information and evaluate that piece? And I don't know the answer, but I, I have to, that's my biggest concern. Like, there's, the recent, many recent studies that have shown that for being black in Wisconsin is not a, a good thing, whether you're a student, mother, or for many, many other, other indicators and measurements. So how are we changing that outcome within our own district? How are we becoming a magnet for diversity, uplifting all communities?
And that calls out right in the, in the current indicators, we do have an indicator that's about all students and then we do have specific indicators about focus group students. If we're shifting to a body of evidence, right, we named here perhaps a commitment to always including disaggregated data, but we also could go to two indicators for proficiency, one about all students and one about focus group students, just to ensure that level of attention that you're also calling out.
And part of that is a concern of, you know, we, you know, implicit unconscious bias infiltrate everything. And I want to make sure that that's not coming into how we're teaching our students, that we're uplifting and we're becoming more aware of that and we're identifying where there are opportunities to change the outcomes based on what our teaching methods are.
To go along with what Chris is saying, and I've been scratching my teeth since listening to the discussion of not comparing ourselves to, there are programs that are strictly focused on black and brown students that rely on the data of districts statewide to see where they should focus their efforts. And so they're, they're looking at the comparison between Barona and Milwaukee Tech. They're looking at North Division at Middleton. So for us to say that we're only going to focus on Dane County, we're doing a huge disservice to programs that are meant to, to impactivize positively marginalized communities.
I, I will say on the, the focus group indicator we're talking about, just in terms of confusion when I'm looking at the reports we get, the moving out of urgent intervention to whatever step always confounds my brain. I have trouble conceptualizing just that framing. And so if there's another way to capture that, I also think that that proposed indicator is aimed at assessing growth, which there's already another one that's aimed at assessing growth. So I don't know, there'll be two indicators that are growth based. I know I definitely don't want to lose, and again, not to be broken record, I don't really care if it's an indicator or an evidence, but I don't want to lose the breakout data of the focus groups. And, or the progression of it. I mean, I have, I have some concerns with any indicator that's growth from the year before because, like Corby said, the denominator changes growths. If it's one student that's different and it's up by half a percent or down by half a percent, is that really, you know, indicative of, of, you know, not meeting the expectation? But I, I, I know that as part of the assessment process, we don't want to lose growth, especially among our focus group students. And I think we can acknowledge, and we've talked about it before, if, if we're setting benchmarks, the problematic message it sends if you're setting a different benchmark to a different.
Yeah.
You're saying you have lower expectations of them than you have of your student group as a whole, which is in and of itself problematic. So I know that benchmarking among our focus groups is a real concern with that.
Corby's mentioned, you know, the cohort, you know, option. Is that something that we can explore? Is there a way to, because I think there is, you know, if we're talking about growth, how do we measure apples to apples and examine growth with a cohort? I mean, I know we have trouble with in and out of districts, but.
Yeah.
Sure, I think within the idea of a body of evidence, there's flexibility for both. We certainly could present cohort data of students who've been in the district a certain amount of time and we could present current state of the students in front of us right now. So we could provide both so that you're seeing what that looks like. Because I think, yes, as you're naming, Meredith, we have students who are moving in and out and we also want to be accountable for their achievement as well. There are also some of these assessments that only report if a student's been in our district for so long. So some of that controls slightly for that, but if you're looking at multiple years, that could be part of a, a body of evidence. When we ask, what are some of the parameters? Perhaps that's one of the parameters that's important is that we're providing both cohort data and full enrollment data.
That's an interesting.
I really liked it, some of the site visits we did where it was like, they told like an individual student's story over the course of a year or two years or something. I thought that kind of told the whole picture a lot better than the data sometimes does. And I know you can cherry pick a single student, but that kind of gets at what Corby's talking about, which is the cohort, like seeing an individual student or the same group of students over time. I don't know the best way to do this, but.
I think just wanted to put back in the space from our last discussion of all cohorts. And I, I agree with the mindset about it, just I just want us to consider the ramifications of our most mobile students are, are students of color in our district. And that data would be absent because they, because they won't be a part of cohort data. And so I think if it's part of a bigger, bigger picture of multiple areas, but where we, I, I would, I would struggle losing that voice of our, of our most mobile students. And, and like John spoke to earlier, the issue of raw mobility, housing prices and all those things that contribute to mobility are systemic issues, but their voice still matters to us. I think our board wants it to still matter as well.
I, I would say that I'm not a huge fan of using cohort data to evaluate like, are we being effective in like results policies, teaching students to be literate, numerate, things like that? And when you want to make the case that, hey, we've introduced this new curriculum or we've introduced this new policy with the teachers are getting more planning time or whatever it is, or we've changed our scheduling around, if you want to make the argument that that change has been effective, that's, I think, when you have to look at cohort data a little bit. But in this particular case, I'm not sure that it would be that useful.
With proficiency, aren't we talking progression? Are we, are we, from year to year, it would be nice to see if, how, how this group of students is doing. I'm, I'm speaking strictly, when I'm looking at it, I'm thinking of before third grade is what I'm thinking of. I want to make sure, especially our black and brown students are able to read at a third grade level before they go on to fourth grade because we know what the data says to them. The only way I think to track that accurately is cohort related data. You can, I don't think you can track that progression by just simply introducing a new group of black and brown students each year and then saying that they, they progressed a regress.
I, I would wonder how useful, learning to read is not a straight line for almost anybody. So you can have like red flags pop up in kindergarten that are gone in first grade. You can have red flags pop up in third grade that are gone by sixth grade. And so I just, I wonder with that specific example, I'm just chewing on it in my head.
I think I agree with what Dr. Clary said, which is that I like the idea of using data surrounding cohorts to show evidence of growth, but it's not the only evidence of growth. It's, it's part of the picture, which again, goes back to like more subjectivity. And I, I want some kind of indicator around focus groups and growth, but I want to have the flexibility to be able to interpret the evidence that's presented to say whether or not reasonable progress is.
And it's understanding that, and I'm glad to hear the board talking about growth. And so the more student experience in a district, the more they grow. But also just want to rename in our space that proficiency doesn't follow a calendar. And that's, that's one of our biggest issues in education is everything proficiency follows some, maybe the calendar, that just not the way their brain works. And it's what is that journey to that, the standard, it'll be something set up of what proficiency means for, for that student. And it, there's, there's so many factors in the development of the brain, especially around reading, that come into play as you're on that journey.
And to speak to that growth thing, I've always, I just actually had this conversation recently with my kids because they got their startups out of bag and I left it out like an idiot. And so they were like, what is this? What does this say about me? I'm like, well, nothing, but I might as well talk about it since it's got a lot of three colors on it. And, and I directed them to the, to the growth measurement over the top corner instead of the benchmarked measurement. And in this discussion, what would be curious to me is looking at the growth measurement as an indicator, for example, generally, but then also amongst focus groups. And, and seeing if there's a gap in growth, I'm sure there is, and then asking questions around that. Like that, to me, is like looking at the growth more than. Yeah, I, you know, I'm just trying to think of ways that you can get data about what you're doing that disaggregates all the stuff that goes on in the world that helps or hinders our students, that's systemic, that, you know, we can try to work against, but it's still there. We're not going to, you know, change housing environment. We're not going to, you know, change housing in Verona to a large degree. You know, if we're doing our job, housing becomes even more desirable. But, you know, that's, other, other people make those decisions generally.
Yeah, we can change housing, but we can build properties that makes the value of the housing more appropriate.
We can build properties?
We can build sites.
Yeah, we can, well, we can align our schools with the property situation at hand.
Correct.
For sure. But, you know, we're not going to go drop a Section 8 development anywhere or help people that can't even afford affordable housing move to Verona. So, yeah, that's what I'm getting at. So anyway, so, you know, I'm just trying to find the other that like looks at specifically what we do and doesn't introduce like messiness around what we don't do.
If I may, I think what you just shared, John, that's what our teachers are doing every day.
Yeah.
And that's what schools are doing when, when they look at that, when our teachers get together on Mondays, when they get together and, and they're doing that. And so I think it's important to separate that from, I think, the conversation we're having here, which is kind of our report card as, you know, district leaders and supporting Dr. Clarity and our students. And I think we can make a clear, clear line that the work that's happening and doing just that on a daily basis, that if we do that well, that will show on some of these more kind of macro level scale measures. And so I say that not to say, not to consider that. I think we just have to remember that there are aspects of some of this data review that they wouldn't live at a board meeting. We don't share that and have, like you said, Joey, a teacher should be talking about, you know, the work that's happening that is impacting this one student or this group of students. And, and remembering that that's going to happen regardless of the decision we make here for a moment. Because that's just good teaching.
Just to make sure we save a little time and capacity also for the second piece of this, we also have the proposed indicators surrounding elective areas. We can maybe just put a little energy into that unless there's more we want to dig into. We could all compartmentalize these and split the time. We kind of talked about if there's just more to be said about the results policies around the four core areas or thoughts about spending some time on the proposed indicators on elective areas. How much capacity do folks have to go into the next page?
I got plenty of capacity.
Okay.
I would ask if the admin team's getting enough out of our rambling discussion.
I don't want to, I don't want to derail anything, but since we're having a workshop around indicators and everything, and can we have just a little bit of discussion about the one thing that confuses me every time, which is the difference between reasonable progress and reasonable progress with exceptions? Because I don't feel like I even understand what the difference is between.
And this may change it, right? Because to your point, we were working under like the checkboxes, right? Where it was almost deemed, it was almost led into one response based on what the checkboxes said in terms of green, yellow, and red. So that becomes a space that I think is interesting for discussion of how, right? That is our thing to interpret and define as the board.
Which is exactly my line of thinking, because I'm sitting here thinking of like, what I really want is more power to kind of say what I think the assessment is of the performance. But then I'm sitting here being like, well, even, even I don't understand the difference. So I don't know when to put something in one category versus another. And I guess it would just be helpful for me if we had more definition around when we use that middle category. And maybe that's a discussion for another day. I just don't know when the next time we're going to have a workshop around indicators.
I think we add.
In two weeks, we could take, continue.
But yeah. It was a way to add that discretion, you know, so there's the reasonable. So that was trying to capture some of the, rather than.
When it was more objective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe if we're moving into more of a holistic review, then it's.
Less necessary, maybe?
Yeah.
I think, I would say that, you know, the, again, the language for me is key. Like, if it's reasonable progress, it's progress towards something. We were setting all these percentage goals.
Yeah.
So that made sense. I think when we come out of this, it's going to make sense to kind of reevaluate. Like, I feel like if we're getting a body of evidence, it's much more discussion around like effective, ineffective, like yellow light, you know, like excited with caution. I don't know.
Okay.
You know, I think we're going to end up in a different place.
I, you said what I was going to, you said when I raised my hand, so that's great.
My mind?
Yes. I don't know about that, John. Then we probably end up in a different place. When we were checking the boxes, with, to Joe's point, which is, I think, Chris unfortunately kind of where we're turning to it was, the exceptions became of the demographic breakdown groups. If we didn't exactly hit one of those groups, that was the exception. Not that the leadership was in totality for the majority of students had not worked, but we didn't hit all of, all the focus groups.
I, I think I can wrap my head around if we move towards a more subjective analysis, that middle category becomes less necessary. I, I guess I don't think it needs to go away, but maybe that's not what it's.
I would still want to change the language.
Right.
Especially if we're doing that, my fair point was we should have the exceptions.
And that language is stuff, that's what we own, right? The, the way we want to assess all of this, so that can be something that we brainstorm. I don't know if I have suggestions at this moment, but I appreciate the chance for maybe us to think about what we want to call that, name that, what that process would be. But I see all of this being, the discussion being so different. If this is kind of how we're framing indicators and getting evidence to analyze and discuss, it just seems like a step in a direction that would shift even that conclusionary process a little bit.
I agree, that feels like a next discussion once.
Right.
This work is done.
And I don't know if it would take another, like, run through, but you all are so good at wordsmithing on this.
More, I think it'll be so apparent, like.
Like this is what we, through the process of doing, and yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
But I would like our language to align, like what our values, if we're shooting for excellence, excellent. Use that word more.
No, our electives just make me cringe because it makes me want to go to DPI and have a conversation with them. Because that foreign language, I can't believe it's not a requirement. I'm like, what? It's, I, I don't know, I, I just don't understand. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't match with our equity framework at all. How can you thrive in a diverse global society when you only speak English? Like, to me, that, that's problematic, but that's just me. I, I, when it was introduced at one of our meetings, when we were going through DPI's requirements, I thought I was seeing things. And I'm used to coming from a place where a foreign language is a requirement.
It's also, I mean, if you think about how common Spanish is spoken in, in Scotland and, and, and in the United States, and it should be something that.
Yes.
I come from a district, we, we came from a district where Spanish was, you could have that as an option. Everyone had that as an option, as a dual language.
Yep.
So that was kind of shocking for us.
So my question is, do you guys have enough to go on if we move on to the next?
Yeah, have we done so far?
Can I attempt to summarize some of the big themes? Can you tell me if they're?
At your own risk.
This is why Laurie's got really good notes and we have video recording so you can catch some of the nuances.
Oh, this is being recorded?
Always.
Sorry, want a key, I guess.
So I'm hearing, I think.
See you on the football field.
That overall, perhaps the idea of streamlining the indicators to come to perhaps a set about proficiency and a set of growth may be gaining some traction and getting us closer to what it is we're trying to get to versus aligning indicators specific to a test. I'm hearing that the one indicator for proficiency and growth may not be enough to call out our commitment to the success of our focus groups. So perhaps it's two for proficiency and two for growth, making sure to really explicitly call out the focus group work there. I think that we have some work to do to determine our comparative group, but that it's really important to the board that we do have comparative groups. And we're seeing, we have benchmarks for districts that have similar resources to us and similar conditions, as well as understanding within the context of our geographical area, what is, what is our, how are our outcomes and how are our students performing relative to that? I'm hearing that perhaps a body of evidence could leave room for both cohort data as well as current enrollment. So we're balancing students who've been in our system for multiple years as well as students who are moving in and out and may be the most vulnerable. And we want to maintain accountability to those students and their success as well. And then I think I'm hearing that the idea of a body of evidence may provide the board with more opportunity to clearly evaluate where our, how our leadership moves, aligning with the data that we're seeing and come to, come to, whether it's reasonable progress or excellence or whatever, the final determination by the board is. So I think those are some of the overall themes that I'm hearing tonight. Is there, is that accurate, I guess I should say, or what, what might we be missing?
Sounds pretty good.
Let's do the next one.
All right. You can start us off if you like. Everyone's seeing the full document, right, that has the elective course pieces.
So really, we were looking at just those two survey questions, perhaps to get back to some student voice data about what's really important. Is it important that students take all of these pieces? And we had talked previously about if it was that students take credits in all these areas, perhaps that's a conversation about graduation requirements. But we heard from the board at that workshop that we weren't necessarily moving in the direction of changing graduation requirements, but wanting to lean into better understanding, what does student voice tell us about how students feel like the course offerings match for them? So that's how we have arrived at these two draft survey questions, but certainly open to all our feedback about if that will get us the data we need.
So I felt like these survey questions in particular weren't really enough for me to anchor like a whole body of evidence around these results policies on. But it's not to say that I know what would be. I also had a question about deviating a little bit from a Likert scale. Because I, I still like the idea of like having five options, but like really when we do five options, sometimes two of those are just nonsensical options, like, because it's, yeah. Anyway, what would be interesting to me in asking questions like this is understanding if students felt like there were more options than they even wanted or imagined. There were just the right amount of options. There are not enough options. And here's the one where I'm going to get myself into trouble. They don't care. And I would be really curious about getting that they don't care answer, because that helps me understand like how many students are engaged or not with setting these goals. Like, that would be like kind of the red flag indicator for me. If I'm giving students, you know, any student is just like, I don't care what the course offerings are. That's something where I would want to be like, we're meeting about that. We're trying to figure out what you want to care. If, you know, 20% of our student body doesn't care, eighth grade enrolling in their freshman classes, something's not lining up to their, and you can't get that out of a, you can't get apathy out of a Likert scale.
Actually, I think, John, because the neutral selection, you know, Likert scale is the apathy.
The neutral one is like, I think it's a difference between like, I don't know what to pick or I don't care what to pick, and I don't care what you're offering me, is what I'm getting at. It's a different kind of apathy. Like, I know that in a Likert scale, it's designed so that the neither is the apathetic response, but like, it just. Yeah, it just doesn't, it doesn't mean it. Like, I've evaluated a lot of survey data on the Likert scale. And when you're evaluating the data, that number three ends up meaning nothing.
I agree with that piece. I, you, I was right with you when you say you didn't want Likert scale. But as we were getting to the, how are you describing apathy? That is how, that's kind of how they're built. That's why the neutral part is built. So I don't know, I was trying to think of how to, Simon says that you both.
I think I kind of struggled just with more survey questions in general. Because, I mean, if I'm thinking, just the course offerings support my growth toward my post-secondary goals. I mean, I don't know, is that going to, I don't even, like, who has post-secondary goals in like sixth grade, seventh grade, or something? I mean, I just wonder, is that like, I don't know.
It's a language problem, right?
Yeah, that was my, it's about just the phrasing of that question.
You can't ask that question. It's going to be about like my post-high school goals at least, to understand.
My semester goals.
What I feel like doing right now.
Yeah, or just am I interested?
I don't care about goals, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, I, I guess I do struggle with just relying more heavily on survey questions. So I think we have a lot of survey-heavy questions.
Sure. My thought on the flip side of that is I keep trying to think of if-not survey questions, because we've been down the road of if-not survey questions. Like, what are we really trying to understand with these elective areas? Because I don't want grades or benchmarks or, you know, so like.
But Amy, you, you brought up some great points, I think, in the past about how these, like, if you're involved in extracurriculars or if you're involved in critique, like, how is that helping round out your student experience in some different? Like, if you toggle this, you're increasing achievement or investment in. I think, I mean, I, yeah, I don't have the answer on how to obtain that information. I think, again, it's just as a, as a board member, I'm looking to find out, are we, are we needing our students where they're at? And increasing enrollment isn't going to capture that. I mean, I still don't know.
What does the policy we're making indicators for even say?
Yeah, I was going to read that. It says each student will be literate and then we're able to achieve their personalized goals. Accordingly, each student will, and then it goes to the four content areas. And then 2.2 says acquire the academic competencies needed to achieve their personal goals in CTE, world language, creative and performing arts, health, and FIDE. So it's acquire the academic competencies needed to achieve their personal goals. So perhaps that's where we come back to academic and career planning is really where students would be identifying, what are those personal goals? And then our duty here is to help students acquire the academic competencies needed to achieve their personal goals. And that's where, excuse me, it gets tricky, but what if, what if I don't have a personal goal in CTE? What if my personal goal is specific to creative and performing arts? How does that align? And how do we get to the indicators that measure how well we're helping students acquire these competencies for their personal goals?
Or those who don't have personal goals yet, who are just getting the exploration classes. Because I think that captures so many people, and I feel like that.
Yeah.
In my opinion, this is a really difficult result policy to measure against and to assess the superintendent's performance against, because we have no idea what the student's personal goals are. And no matter how we collect the data, we're not going to get that unless we ask them the question, do these course offerings meet your personal goals? But I think I agree with everything that's been said about the usefulness of that, of the data that would come out of doing that. This might be an area that we maybe need to relook at from our standpoint, how we've worded the policy.
So, go ahead, Chris.
I just, so there's a passion piece here too of making sure that our students are passionate about the world, passionate about school, passionate about seeing something beyond here and what they're building. And so my, my question is, how do we gather the information of what's missing? If it's not these, what else? Maybe there's something else that we have not built in or seen that our students have an indicator. They, they know what they want, but we just don't offer it.
And I, Chris's point is a great one, because when we've, as a board, talked about what, what this indicator has kind of meant to us, we've talked about it in those terms, which is not what the policy language itself says.
Also, before, for our students that are not enrolled in electives, that are not choosing, we need to, to find out why. You know, historically, Black students are the smallest population of students enrolled in AP courses. That's nationally. This is our opportunity to find out here why, what, what's going on.
How can we get to that, Corby? Would it be?
That's going back to what Joe said, that's that qualitative piece. That's that, that's us asking, that's us talking to our students.
So how do we ask that in a way that we get engaged student answers? I think that's where I struggle with the surveys.
So Assistant Principal Sean Harris had me here, and I met with six of our students and asked that very question. Two of them responded. Two of them's response, we don't have teachers in the high school who look like me. That was their response. I don't feel comfortable going into a classroom in an advanced course when I don't get help in the courses that I have now.
I mean, it's hard to take the course where you know you're putting yourself out there.
Yes.
If, if you don't have something to latch on to, whether that's someone that looks like you or just some sense of empathy or anything, I get it, like that, I think you hit the nail on the head why that's a big deal. So if I can digress, you know, we talked last time about, you know, there are some really interesting ways to ask questions about, um, you know, to get at this around the idea of scheduling, right? Like our students filling up their time with electives or are they just trying to get off campus through, through study halls, right? We can ask questions like that. We can ask questions about like how deep into one line of study students are getting over their time here. Those are, I think, really interesting ways that we talked about in our last discussion of looking at, are we providing the opportunities and are they being taken up a little bit? But those are all lagging indicators. You can only really look at that at the end. And what we're struggling with here is asking about goals and subjective things at the beginning. One of my notes here before we went into this is like, you can do this sort of survey stuff, but what would be interesting to me is to do it both sides of high school, like going in, do you see the opportunities and goals that you want in the coursework? And then coming out, were you able to meet the objectives that you wanted coming out? Obviously, phrase that in a way that makes more sense to someone in that experience. I think that could be a really interesting way to look at survey data and then combine that with like some hard data about like, how many students have more like 28 credits and 24 credits when they graduate? You know, what does that look like? Um, you know, we talked about some of the dangers in like looking at graduation requirements, but one of the things when we first talked about these results policies is having eventually an idea of what does it mean to be a graduate of the school? Now, that might be a conversation about graduation requirements. It might also be a conversation about setting up a metric that's built around, like what is an ideal dispersion of study electives while you're here? And how close to that are our students getting, you know? And, and part of this is also like, you know, we're taking a very functionalist approach to education, like how are we preparing you for your goals or your next career boots or something like that? But we're asking it in a very liberal artsy way, like what are you passionate about? Those things just at a philosophical level are really hard to line up. You know, we might need to step back and say, okay, there's the pragmatic, how are you getting closer towards your goals or being trained up to be a productive, you know, member of society with a job and everything? And then there's the more liberal artsy, like, hey, are you trying new things? How can we look at that through the scheduling? Are you passionate about something? Can we look at that through some sort of survey question? That's where I think this gets back to being a body of evidence, more so than the last one even, where I could very well say this is our anchor indicator and then you guys can add on whatever you want to make these three points about, you know, are we effective? Is it context, is it over here, how's it changing with time? Here, it's much more about like, are students prepared? And what does that look like? And are students passionate? And what does that look like? And those are two very different things. It's not like we're going to split them down the middle with one key indicator.
I almost think that prepared is something that is a retroactive evaluation. Like, I mean, this is again, we're talking lagging indicators, but I mean, I think three or four of us have kids that are now four years close graduate, you know? Looking back, did we do the job now that you've been out of school for a while? Did you do it? Did, did we do it for you? And that is, again, we're not able to be current with that because it's ever evolving. But, I mean, I do wonder, we've gotten some interesting answers, you know, in my own house that have been not what I would have expected. It's, it's interesting, but how do we capture maybe, did we do the work? Now that you're out in the world living, how far did we help you achieve that? I would be curious, I would be curious maybe that that's not necessarily an indicator, but it is a piece of information that I would be curious to hear because I feel like that, the course offerings supported my growth toward post-secondary goals, that's actually more of a retrospective, I think, as opposed to a, and then all my seventh grader answering that question, give me a 21-year-old answering that question.
Well, and I think also, but I, I think about it differently because I don't know how easy it is to go out and get those 21-year-olds. And that might vary depending on like, well, they went to, they, they thought they had it all together and it didn't work because life, so it depends on the day. But I think you could get some really interesting data like that, like you're registering for graduation, answer these questions, like we got you now, you gotta answer them. But like really like, tell us, like, do you feel like your high school experience prepared you for the next step or not?
But I think you almost have to have the next step to know, because how do you know if you're prepared for the next step?
You've got it, like, you know, you've got an image of yourself going out into the world, even if it's like wrong-headed and, you know, you're gonna fall flat on your face. I, I was a master of falling flat on my face out of high school. I did it for five or six years before I went to college. Like, you didn't want to ask me in those five or six college years if high school helped because it's no.
I think this is why, I keep listening to you two, is making me understand more and think of why I didn't let that first question. Go ahead.
So the conversation, everyone has been on point in the desire, the, the issue at hand is that what is being articulated desire is not the policy. The policy specifically asks, do these four categories allow you to achieve your personal goals? The only four categories that we're talking about are career tech, world language, creative arts, and health and P E.
Yep.
And so if those are, as I'm here and I thought, Meredith, this really, really hit it, how do you have permission and what actually are the competencies that allow you to achieve your personal goals because based off the way the policy is written, we've identified it for you, then only in those four areas can we respond to. And so the policy itself, if it's beyond that, we have to remove the four areas because that's the only thing that we are currently trying to measure.
Yeah, that's what I, I think, I think every discussion we've had has been great around indicators that we want that'll show us data that's not what the policy is asking for. And so maybe we should create a policy that asks for the data we want to get.
Yeah.
What data do we want?
That's a good question.
I mean, the, the things I have heard from some of you really rise to the top about like, do I feel like coming to school is an amazing experience for me because there's things here I want to participate in? It's a poorly phrased sample question, but just, and, and kind of to what you shared, Corby, about why couldn't students, students help us create what we want to hear? I mean, this is all about their experience, so I certainly don't want to sit in this chair and try to pretend to craft the question that they would want to answer. Like, how are they thinking about their school experience?
I have a group that will tell you.
I bet you do. I mean, right? Like, I feel like this more than anything because, you know, the four core areas, it is what it is, right? There is just stuff that's beyond even their control that we just get to follow these kind of prescribed ways of being. If we're looking to be more creative and to change and to push the envelope on just how we're doing this cool thing, I don't know, I think student voice would be really interesting on this. We're gonna kind of start to just blow it up, let's just have fun with it. I don't know. I think the attempt is really good though. I think the attempt is what has started to lift up the fact that student voice being elevated in this is really, I think, key for me anyway. Because we're so, I'm sorry, just one more P. We're so responsive to student voice in terms of staffing for classes too. I mean, right? All of this is fluid because we are elevating so much what students choose that we craft teaching schedules and hiring and shifting FTEs based around that. So that responsiveness, I feel like also deserves to be measured, not constrained or confined.
And that process is clearly an OE11, right? So that's already defined in that.
Right.
Operational expectation. What, what we get, the added layer here is the personal goals. There we get the OE11 says, we'll build a schedule based on student requests. We can infer that those student requests are perhaps aligned to personal goals, but this 2.2 is really calling out achieving the academic competencies, competencies to achieve those personal goals. And that's perhaps where we're getting stuck here within the policy language.
Is it, all right, I'm kind of talking myself in circles. I mean, I'm curious, is it a way to survey students that are already going down a pathway of, you know, career tech or world language, so those who have kind of invested in this? And are we meeting their needs of that cohort of students? But that doesn't capturing really all of the information either. I mean, again, I think it comes back to what do we want? Because if we don't have that clearly defined, and I can't say that I have it, I, I want to know that our students are coming to school and feeling emotionally invested, that they are, you know, able to access experiences that are enriching. But that's just, you know, it.
I think we're having, I, I agree with what you're saying, but I feel like we keep treading into other results policies.
Yes.
Like that's, that's health and wellbeing.
Yeah, that's it. I think that's the problem with those policies.
Well, but I think, you know, so when we look at, um, you know, like literacy, we've, we're looking at proficiency, maybe that's not the number we use, maybe whatever we're telling the story, but it's centered around some metrics for some objective measure of what success looks like in that field. You know, with these, is there some objective measure that we can say kind of anchors these to kind of create a whole body of evidence as like academic fields, right? Like, you know, when we get into like, you know, passionate students and things like that, that might be more of a health and wellbeing adjustment that we need to, to, you know, tinker with. And I, so I just, I was looking up there and just like, the, um, the seal of bi-literacy, the way that the district told that story of the increase from last year to this year of the number of students who are successful in achieving the seal of bi-literacy is a tremendous indicator of success in that area, right there.
I feel like that's an outlier though, because there is a way to tangibly measure.
Right. Well, I mean, but like art and music, I mean, you could look at, you know, the number of students that do solo ensemble and how they do, or the number of students that are, you know, participating in art shows or presenting their art or something like that. Um, you know, it gets a little bit more, especially if you feel it because nobody's going into the art gallery downstairs and going like, that's a nine, that's a 10, like that's just not how it works. Um, but I don't know. I mean, I don't really have an answer. I'm just saying like, I think it's worth bearing in mind that a lot of the things that we're talking about are actually a different results policy that we have and can tinker with there.
I think that the core problem that I'm having though is what is the thing we want to measure here? Because like you said, we've identified where it is in other policies, so what are we trying to measure here? And if we are able to articulate what we're trying to measure, then we are not going to find indicators.
Right.
And to John's point, it's not even really course offerings because that's covered elsewhere also.
Yeah.
And we seem to have by default kind of defaulted towards our, measuring our course offerings in each of these areas, but that's not really what it's asking.
Although like, you know, the, the career and technical education, we could, we could look at how many students are in some sort of apprenticeship or training program, just like we look at seal of bi-literacy. You know, I mean, there's, there's ways to do it if we just start with a hard number.
But again, what are we doing, right? For what purpose?
Yeah, and I, I feel like I'm approaching it backwards because I look at all of the indicator that, that's listed on the current indicators. I love all of that and I want to keep getting that, but that's evidenced. But I don't want to build an indicator that says every year, you're, the number of students who get the seal of bi-literacy has to increase.
Right.
Because that's just, but I want to know how many students have gotten that seal and what it's been in the past.
So are these truly evaluative results policies that we want to be, I mean, is this informational results rather than evaluative results? Does that make sense?
Because if we're showing, right, responsiveness to students through other means, right, your accountability to responsiveness to student choice.
Yeah, I think that's like, are we, are we saying your performance as a superintendent hinges on the response to these questions? Because I don't think it does.
Correct.
Right. So in my opinion, I'm looking at this as, I loved getting the information. It's very interesting information. It tells a story. It's an opportunity for us to really highlight some areas of great strength. And I'm not using that to evaluate you as a superintendent.
Right.
It's still interesting information and helpful information. It's, it's a great district information. But then the purpose of these is to evaluate. So that's where I'm, I'm kind of making a distinction in just throwing it out there. Is this a informational results rather than an evaluative result? We're not putting this in meets expectations, fails to meet expectations language. We're just putting it into, here's information about our district. Does this make?
It sounds, if I were putting it into a space, it would, it would be more into OE9 communication about these areas and OE9, which is communication, if it's not directly responsive, if it's not directly tied to the resulting by evaluation, but we would still have the same evidence in that space because whenever communicated to our board and thus the full community, what each of these areas are, how, how we're, what's the student experience in these areas, but it's not necessarily a growth, growth, I can talk about.
That makes sense, yes. So they would still be standalone, maybe, you know, policies that we have information on, but the evaluative part is would be in communicating. Does that, because I guess I, I'm having a hard time looking at this and saying, yes, the performance of the superintendent is based on any of this? No, that's, that, none of that makes any sense to me at all. But I do want to know the experience of our students. And that comes in in so many other places that we've captured, so I'm just, anyway.
So I'm worried that, so my last comment, what I was building towards is that I worry about this kind of getting so gobbledygooky that we're not actually doing anything with it. And I'm a little worried that this conversation is going that way. Like, I would say that there is an important evaluative function here. Like, if we just left it at, you know, are they doing math and literacy and science and social studies well? Like, what does that, what does that say in terms of like, we evaluate our superintendent, but like really it's just in terms of like college prep? That's kind of where we're at. You know, like, I, I like the idea of better of, you know, having these be evaluative and, you know, having some sort of like, all these things, I don't need to know, like, I, I think we're right to say we don't need to know that more students are enrolling in these. That can be handled elsewhere when we talk about, are we providing opportunities? This is more about like, okay, I'm providing opportunities aside, the number of students that want these opportunities, how successful are they at that? So, you know, we might have 50 students that are focused on career and technical education, right? This isn't where we ask, should be at 55 or 56. This is where we ask, are those students who are so committed to that graduating or prepared to then step into the apprenticeship or the next level of, of work that they're doing? That's, that's why it's to me a results policy that is evaluative. Similarly, like the students that, like, they 100% love art, I don't need to know how passionate they are right here. I don't need to know if there's more of them than the CTE folks. What I need to know is if they decided to take the art classes and do that, are they prepared in the same way that the students that are in English class should be prepared and proficient as they walk out?
With what, with what metric?
Yes. I, I don't know that there's a single metric. I think that what I'm saying is that it is our job to evaluate and say, yes, you're being effective at this, or no, you're not. And it is your job to say, here's the story of us being effective at this.
Okay, so let me wrap all of that because I'm just throwing it out there, it's evaluative versus informational. So they come back into Joe saying, you want discretion, you know, so is this where, give us the information and we determine? I mean, this is, this feels, I, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out, if we haven't even settled on a common understanding of what we're looking for in these policies, then are, we can't, how do we evaluate it? How do we, you know, I, I could be evaluating something entirely different than Joe's.
So I feel like that's almost where the conversation has started to shift to, right? What, what would we want to see if anything? What do these results mean as potential results?
And I think maybe if, for me, I would say, until we can articulate what we want to. until we can articulate what we want to accomplish with these policies, then any discussion of indicators feels like kind of backwards.
I agree, mostly. I think, again, like, we don't own the indicators.
But we do own the policies. And that's what the parts that I'm still like, I think we did a a less great job.
Well, we broke the policies like into the commonly like, these are the fields of study. I don't know. My question would be, is there a better way to look at these academic areas or content areas that align with how students actually enroll in classes, right? Like, does CTE align with like, you've got a culinary track? You've got, you know, um, uh, an auto mechanical type track? Like, if we were to rethink our results policy, is there a way to split out like, okay, literacy, there's English classes. You know, the LA class is pretty straightforward. Math, again, that's a department, pretty straightforward. You know, science, number of different types of science, but it's all one apartment. Like, CTE, you know, art and music, two very different things, similar kind of thing. Like, can we align our results, our policies, our results with what students are?
Yeah, OE 11 is instructional programming. That's where the idea of how we schedule students and how we build, how we're beholden to building a schedule based on student interest. 11.4 says, assure that the instructional program includes opportunities for students to develop talents and interests in their specialized areas of interest. So 11.4 could be a space where we're providing a body of evidence about the different elective areas that we're offering, including seal by literacy, youth apprenticeships, and those sorts of things. That's evidence that we are continuing to develop students' specialized areas of interest. Because I hear you saying, John, it's almost a value statement. If this does not live within results policy two, you would want it to live somewhere to, to assure that we are tending to well-rounded students beyond just the four core areas. That could be another place to consider.
That's not what I'm saying, though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What I'm saying is, no, no, it's, it's close to what I'm saying. It's what I probably said 10 minutes ago. What I'm saying here is, like, this is all results. But then it makes kind of sense to me. But like, I would want to ask specifically, like, okay, again, here, I don't care about how broadly people are enrolled, how many opportunities are provided. I care about like, if they're in this track and they're working towards that track, how do I know that they're being successful at that track? Because it's, it's that result.
Can I make a suggestion? Because you mentioned that we would come back and have more workshop time. I think if, my request would be, could we put a policy on the table?
Yeah.
And, and start taking indicators off and have the board look at the policies and find out if we even want to be working, because otherwise we're spending time on something that maybe I think the fundamental bedrock is flawed. So.
Thank you for that completely.
Yeah.
You, Mark, I agree, as I do. I do agree with, uh, aggressively. Also, I'm going to ask a, am I allowed to ask a request of the board?
Sure. Workshop.
In preparation for the next one, if we could really look deeply at the language of our journey of a lifelong learner. Because the journey of a lifelong learner that we have built in our five-year plan and we are executing as part of our five-year plan encompasses almost the entirety of this conver- conversation. And wondering if that would be our grounding document that was built by all of us, our community, our students, our board, that allows for this, what we're actually looking for to come alive, and it was, and was built post of the, the policies. And I always feel like we're trying, I'm trying to force this into, into that.
Can we give that respect to us?
Yes, it's on the front page. If it, VSD, JLL, it'll come right up to your Google screen. Or Savari, or Fox, or what's the other one?
Chrome.
Chrome. Yes, happy to do it.
Actually, I'll show you what the, you can have my personal copy that carry right there. Chances are, I'm gonna go home and I've got an acrylic stand with our equity framework in it, and I might find some other documents that have this right on my desk and home.
Yeah, I think through the course of, oh, go ahead.
So what I would offer the board is something that was helpful for us as we were living in this too, is all of us went to high school. And it was very interesting filtering some of these questions through all of these things. Really interesting. Yeah, just even the three of us went to three very different high schools. Two in the state, one outside of the state, and, and just the different offerings and the different tracks that we were on and how just even asking some of those questions on the light, how we would answer that was an interesting way to just check some of them.
Yeah.
I, so I, I, I did want to clarify to you, I, I mentioned, I, I think I was the one that brought passion into the conversation. And what it meant by that is engagement, like, there's curiosity, engagement to push through. And I, I, you know, I think, I think about a kid who's considering dropping out and just leaving school because they don't have community. They don't have a direction. How do we capture that? You know, I've had so many family members that have dropped out because of life, right? And so that, that's, that's the critical piece, the most the kids that need to be in community. How do we reach them? And, you know, that's, this is what kept me out of draft. That was, I got by the skin of my teeth, but that's what kept me going. Was music, was art, was it things that, you know, I may not have been the best at, but can be more. So that's, that's why it's hard to make an evaluation piece around this. The success is, is, is that engagement from every student and finding that community there. So that's, you know. I mean, I'll get emotional about it, but it's, yeah, it's, it's pretty.
It's hugely important piece.
Yeah.
And it's just the, how do we, what are we looking for in a policy to measure something intangible? And I, yeah, but I think that would be a good conversation. Because I, I think the more we talk about it, that this almost needs to marinate.
Yeah.
And thank you, Chris. I think that example you gave, if you think about the six characters of journey of a lifelong learner, which are personal growth, communicator, collaboration, self-awareness, empathy, and resourcefulness. Those are all the, the skills that I think you achieved, and that was the venue in which, in which it happened. So how do you pick up those skills regardless of venue? You make sure that they are thriving because either with CTE program where they found those skills coming like the arts. And I don't think it's the art project at the end of it. Did they develop these lifelong skills because of that venue that we are providing for them?
Yeah, and how do we catch the kids who aren't already in those programs to help follow them into something?
Correct.
So pause button until two weeks from now, does this feel like a good pause button? I appreciate the way that we kind of got to a point of having some really clear next steps for our next workshop time and to kind of continue the productivity of the discussion. Yeah.
So then I want to just be focused on policy language.
Yeah, because we talked about a few here and there. So it might be good to have, if anyone even has some recollection, how well of a note taker, Meredith, you've been, or Lori too, beyond just this one, who are clearly talking about R 2.2. But if there's other things, as long as we have the workshop time to see where we had that, you know, I wonder about that actual policy language.
I think if we was focus on these four, it'd be a great starting point.
And we should all be re-familiarized with all the results policies.
Yeah, yeah.
So we know where another results policy might cover.
And I'll, I'll send the I'll send the hard, the digital copy of the G framework to the top of everyone's box. And it's, um, if you go right to the journey of a lifelong learner, which I don't have the page number for. Do you have the page number?
I'm giving my copy.
So if it's not electronic, I won't use it.
I don't know. I was hoping for it right here. Is it after that? Yeah. I'll page yours.
It's good. Between the fourth and the fifth.
Couldn't afford to put it in there. It's that page. All right. Um, any further wrap-ups then about for workshop before we officially finish off the rest of our agenda?
And one thing about 2.3, the technologically, I'm just gonna say that that feels like an OE as opposed to a results. That's all I put that there.
That's, yeah.
Drop it.
It's where the very bottom.
You don't need to see it.
Yeah.
Especially the way, I think I put in the notes at the, in the week email about AI, that was, there were some variances of the language on it. It was almost all an operation.
Great point. Okay. All right, uh, general board updates, just again, a reminder about tomorrow. I appreciate all of you working through schedules, those that make it, those that can't, equally appreciative of the time that you've invested to think about tomorrow night, and we'll see some of you. So 5:30 Aztec, 6 o'clock program time, yes?
I Aztec this side, program that side.
Sounds very good. All right, reach out, text if you have any questions on public comment.
I have other questions.
Oh, you do? Oh, yeah. Do you have any CSAT updates?
No.
No? Okay.
I went to a immigration town hall or immigrant town hall. At the Catholic multicultural center. It's where they invite different communities of recent immigrants to come in. And they invite various elected officials to go around and kind of talk with each community about, you know, what they do in their particular function of government and what struggles that community might have and how they can, you know, access local government. So I was there as a school board representative. I think there was like nobody from Madison. Which was hard, because all their questions come from Madison. But, uh, but it was really interesting and eye-opening to kind of think about, you know, some of the unique struggles of these different communities from dramatically. So the way they broke it up is one floor was all Spanish-speaking communities. And then I was on another floor rotating around. And we had, um, I don't know, five different tables with different languages. Two or three of those tables were from like Afghanistan or thereabouts that spoke. But they're unique languages that are not related. There, and then there was a community from Africa. Another Middle Eastern community that spoke Arabic. And it was just really interesting to go through and hear the different struggles they're having. The schools in particular, mostly the Black housing, but the schools in particular. So yeah, it was really cool. Would recommend. But it takes a lot of energy, because there's a lot of translating going on in different, a lot of problem solving. Takes a lot of energy. I enjoyed every minute of it. Would do again.
That's fantastic. Yeah.
Uh, September 24th was at Leopold Elementary School, that's its largest elementary school. And my fraternity, also the 501(c)(3) is the Carter G. Woodson Foundation. And what we do is help provide resources to marginalized communities academically. And at Leopold, we did our book distribution giveaway for all the students there by authors that look like them that told their stories. And we gave away all of our books. All 63 books were gone. We had books in Spanish, we had books in Arabic, books in Mung. All by, by authors that look like, like the students. And it was incredible, talking to the parents.
That's awesome. I know, you board members, super impressed with all the things you're all doing outside of this board table. Thank you for elevating all those things. Anyone else? Okay, superintendent consent agenda, taking a quick look. Are there any questions? Hearing none, the superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented. Board consent agenda, please take a look. Are there any questions? Board consent agenda is approved, hearing no questions. Future agenda items, again, tomorrow night, not listed, but otherwise future board meetings. Then I would accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So.
Thanks, John. Second? Thanks, Christopher. All those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, say goodbye with aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.